The Gulf Shore Life Senator. Please forward.
First, if we could, if we just, each one of us would just take a moment in their heart and just thank God for this beautiful community that we live in, but also to lift in prayer those communities around this nation that have been ravaged by the violence and the flooding, and just to really lift to the Lord our cares for them as well. So, Lord, we truly do come thanking you for the privilege it is and the freedom that we have to come and to have an open meeting like this in such a beautiful city that we live in. Lord, to be guided and directed by truly elected officials, that your hand will be upon this meeting tonight, that your presence and your love and your care will be right here, and that we're reminded by your word that says that your kingdom come and your will be done, right here on earth. And so, we thank you for this, tonight, that each one and each decision will be guided by you, and we thank you for these officials that you've given us to guide us and direct us in the things that we need to do, and that this city will also be one that prospers in everything that it does. We ask these things in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Councilor Slakka, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longheart.
Here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right. Okay, a public comment on agenda items. If any member of the public wishes to speak on an agenda item, and agenda item only, please come forward.
Good evening. Peter O. Flynn, Benita Springs. Talking about 6B. I just want to compliment Community Development and the volunteers of the Bike Walk Task Force for all the hard work they have been putting into making our streets safer and working on bike connectivity. It's interesting, this morning I saw Greg DeWitty was coming back from the walk for the children to school, which evidently was a great thing. But we were chatting, and I said, wouldn't it be great if any day of the year, the children of Benita could bicycle safely to the elementary school or to the middle school on Terry Street? So, I would encourage council to think hard about developing promptly a master plan for bike connectivity in Benita Springs. As I think you know, it was in the original comprehensive plan adopted 15 years ago. There's a lot of good stuff that's been done in town in 15 years, but bike connectivity and real separated bike paths has not been among them. So, I'd encourage you to move forward quickly with respect to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Amy Surtall. I'm here on behalf of the American Legion Post 303. We have an item on the agenda for a permit for a benefit we're having for a three-year-old who has brain cancer. He's the son of two of our members, two local veterans of the community, and I appreciate your consideration for this event, and also would like your sponsorship, too.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time?
Yeah, that's very good. Everybody at Tech 303 for that fundraiser for that little girl. Question on the Italian Feast in G, whether that great big tent has been approved by the fire department. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Brett Forbes, Benita Springs resident. I'd like to put in a plug, just like Peter O. Flynn did, for let's get going on these bikeways, because that's, we've done a lot of things, but that probably is not one that we've done much at all, and it could, we need to do it. I know there's a lot of interest by the younger people, in fact, and even some of the older ones, to ride bikes and be able to shop with a bike and go to destinations and just go out and ride for relaxation. So, I think it's a good thing. I'd also second the people contributing to the victim of the brain tumor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hi, David Zimmerman with Royal Scoop. I noticed you guys are discussing some zoning issues, and I just wanted to ask that you guys maybe open up the idea of allowing people to manufacture ice cream and have some ice cream tasting going on in the overlay that you guys are going to be discussing?
Done. Boom, just that quick. I just did it, right there. Anything else? Sorry. I didn't mean to shut you down. He's like, okay. I was kind of, it's kind of, oh, good deal.
You get the answer you want, you move on.
If the mayor can do anything else for anybody else, please come forward. Oh, okay. Anyone else? Nope? Okay, we'll get on with it here. Oh, there you go. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. I'm Scotty from DeRomo's. I just wanted to say thank you and for one year, and considering the permit for our feast next Thursday. And we have a great thing going in Benita Springs with the Market and Restaurant, and we're growing, hopefully, for the next 20 years. And we have 185 employees now between the Market and Restaurant, creating jobs, a lot of good things happening in Benita, and we really appreciate everybody here, and hopefully you'll be at the feast. Thank you.
Awesome place. Holy geez. Now, I'm hungry between you two last speakers. Can we recess for supper? No. Okay. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none?
Can I just add a minor correction?
Okay.
And this is something that you'll see on your green sheet when we get to the consent agenda, the DeRomo's application. The green sheet incorrectly says Saturday, October the 15th, but as Scotty just pointed out, it's actually Thursday, evening event, Thursday event, October the 15th. So, just wanted to point out that minor correction.
All right. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I also might want to add on that same application. The question was raised about the tent and the fire department. All those inspections are done right as the tent is erected, so it's a little premature.
Okay. All right, good deal. We'll go to Proclamations and Presentations, and I don't have a microphone up here, but we'll go ahead, and would Louis Bruno, please come forward?
This is recognizing Louis and his company. They were, this is a really special thing, because in Benita Springs, we've been working on economic development for a long time here, for the last, probably the last six to eight years. And I have to tell you, it's people like Louis here that are really making it happen in this community. We're really proud of that, and in recognition for him receiving the 2015 Industry Appreciation Emergency Business Leader Award in Lee County, everyone, please give him a good hand. You want to say anything? Start your business here. Hold on. There you go.
Thank you so much. Firstly, I want to thank the City Council for the recognition. We're so lucky to be growing in the city of Benita Springs, our offices. Shoot, I thought it was going to be longer, further away from here, but it was only a couple of minutes, which is great. We're lucky to have the early success we do. We're even luckier to do it in a beautiful city like Benita Springs. And tonight's recognition isn't about me, one man standing up here. It's about our team. What this really is, is a trophy for the 150-plus team members that we have, because they come in every day, make a difference, they try and make our business better, their individual jobs better, and if it wasn't for that effort, and we say it, they get recognized daily internally, but it's the external recognition that is a trophy for them, and it really recognizes their efforts. So, thanks again, and we're proud to be here.
We're proud to have you, man. Congratulations.
Okay. And at this time, one of our favorite characters here, Jennifer Hager.
Character?
Yeah. She'll admit it. She'll admit it.
Thanks for the kind introduction. For the record, Jennifer Dufalla Hagan, Community Development, here tonight to present an update on the mayor's challenge for safer people and streets. Just a brief overview of some of the initiatives and some of the projects and activities that staff and the Bike Ped Safety Advisory Committee, as well as some of your council members, have achieved. First and foremost, because we spoke about it earlier, today was actually Walk to School Day, and I know that Dr. McIntosh was there in support of that. Staff did also participate in Bike to School Day in May, and Councilman Gibson was there attending on behalf of that as well. So, those are two of some of the bigger initiatives that we've participated citywide here. Also, the Bike Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee has been basically the champions of some of these initiatives, and some of the things that they have completed is some helmet fittings that they've partnered with the Health Department and the Children's Hospital of Southwest Florida. And I think they almost did, I think, 50 helmet fittings that they did in the July neighborhood, neighborhood, help me, Carl, the activity that we did, code enforcement did, Fourth of July. Neighborhood services, I'm sorry. Stand corrected. And fitted almost 50 students with helmets. Also, the committee is working on some public service announcements for bike safety, and they are looking at purchasing bike lights for increased visibility and giving those out at some of these safety events and bike rodeos. So, some of, those are some of the activities for the committee. Community Development is currently working on amending some of the Land Development Code development standards to implement the complete streets resolution that the city adopted, and those are being processed through some of the typical street cross-sections citywide that you'll be coming, this proposed amendments will be coming back to within the next few months. Public Works has completed some projects. Those include some bicycle pavement marking and signage along Imperial, also some sidewalk expansions in the Lightner Creek neighborhood, as well as the Shangri-La and Paradise roadways. And downtown, with our project that we have going on, we are looking at traffic calming, as you know, the roundabouts, and some of the multimodal approaches that we are looking at in terms of complete streets, or some wider sidewalks, some bike sharrows, and some pedestrian crossing islands, those refuge areas are some of those elements. And overall, another project that the city is working on and contracted with a traffic engineer consultants is to look at citywide data improvements and recommendation for multimodal approaches and collecting some of the data that's imperative to make some of these improvements and recommend for future initiatives. So, those are the big, high-level items that we've been working on since you accepted this challenge back in March. If you have any questions, I'm here to take them, otherwise.
Good. Any questions for Jennifer? Good.
Not really questions, just a couple, a couple of things to add, and some people have touched on it here today. Great work so far. I mean, this is, this is fantastic, and it plays right in, or in my mind, plays right in, when I introduced the visioning study for Benita Beach Road, and we had already mentioned here, and I just want to read for those that may not know, in our comprehensive plan from the year 2000, Section 4 says, "A community with outstanding parks and recreational facilities, parks and natural resources should be easily accessed through a continuous system of safe shaded walkways and bicycle paths which connect to homes, shopping, and workplaces." So, you know, that was 15 years ago, and right now, I'm not sure we have, you know, any of that. So, we have plenty of bike strips on the side of roads like 41 and Norma, Bigger Path for people to pedal on and are scared, but those aren't complete streets. So, I'd like to maybe ratchet this up a bit, and let's develop a master plan for real bike connectivity, move it up quickly, let's get it funded, let's get staff involved, and we have wonderful, wonderful volunteers, but I think it's time to ratchet this up and go after it hard and aggressively.
Well, thank you for reminding me. I think that's one of the items I actually failed to mention. The Bike Ped Advisory Committee is actually looking at updating our bike pedestrian facilities map to look at opportunities to add connectivity, and so, that's one of the things they have, they are the champions right now to get that going, so.
Great. Will you guys let me know when your next meeting is?
Yes, it is the third, is it third Monday of every month at the Lyles Hotel at 4:00 PM. So, I definitely forward that information on to you.
Look forward to it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Okay. And so, now we are to the consent agenda, and we have A through H. If council will take a look at that, see if there's anything there you'd like to pull.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved, and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. We're to number eight, first reading.
Thank you. This is a standing ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request to amend the North Bay Village Commercial Plan Development, CPD, to amend tract R of the master concept plan, the schedule of uses, and request of deviations to allow up to 108 multifamily units not to exceed 35 feet on land located at 26355 and 26375 North Bay Village Parkway, Benita Springs, Florida, on 12 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading. The second reading will be held on October 19th, 2015, starting at 9:00 AM. That's a Monday in these chambers.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Move it to the second.
And it's moved to the second, and there's a second. You know, the discussion?
Yeah. I just said, one of the things I was looking at was, I wanted to know how it was going to affect traffic over what's currently allowed to go in into that section.
And I think that discussion will happen at the October 19th meeting. We don't, at this point, it's first reading, so we really don't talk about the case. We'll be happy to talk to you individually, if you would like, but that is an issue in the case, and it's in the record.
Yep. And for the, for the main reason, the main reason that the first reading is just exactly that, it's a reading and the applicant or no one is here to respond to any of these things. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's why we try to keep to some ministerial questions and that type of thing would be fine.
Right. At this point, it has not been advertised yet, so it gets advertised for the October 19th meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Okay, item number nine.
Okay. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, Amending Sections 4868, 4869, and 4872 to allow administrative relief for innovative projects, modifying some uses in the old US 41 redevelopment urban core and in the highway commercial areas, Area 3B, revising the development standards for the residential subareas, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, Scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is a first reading and public hearing of a Land Development Code ordinance, so public comment can be taken at this time. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. Before Jay begins with the presentation, I also just want to go, the local planning agency has reviewed the ordinance. They did find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. They did make a few changes in this ordinance, most notably on page 21, added the same language that was in the other table, which is that the use is not listed, that the Community Development Director, now, I don't think they can do ice cream manufacturing under this methodology, but if it's something similar, they can approve a use that's similar to it in the table. And then, page 23, they talked about pedestrian passage. To make it clear, it's not just five feet you need as open, but you need it similar to complete streets, you need it so that the pedestrians can go through the whole way. At this time, Jay Sweet will provide you with a staff presentation, and if you, and that's it at this point.
Hey. For the record, Jay Sweet with Community Development. I'm going to keep the, keep it brief, and then answer questions if you would like. There's two elements, basically, to this, this change. The first element is, we have asked for a provision, and provide provision here, that when there are minor changes that need to be made, for lack of a better word, a deviation, the staff would have the authority to allow certain deviations. And example I will give you, I'll give you two examples. As we started coming in for designs, one would be, we require a certain amount of glazing on the front of the building.
That's glass, windows.
Windows, glass.
Let's call it that.
Okay. So, we require a certain amount of windows, and what happens, and that's to create, you know, the right atmosphere, and what happens is that sometimes with columns, it's structural, it becomes difficult for them, and the code basically takes a look at it at a plane view, a 2D view, and so, if somebody comes in and does a little encove, like you would see in more traditional old towns, they don't get credit for that. Well, staff under this would be able to evaluate that and say, you know what, they're meeting the intent, we can give them that, credit for that. Another possibility is, part of, we want is the old Florida vernacular, and oftentimes, it's on a roof, that requires the tails of the rafters to be scalloped and to be bigger, and the way they connect to the roof would be, might be a little bit different. We have one such application right now, where technically he would be two or three, four inches, whatever, too tall, but he's providing the architectural elements we're looking for, and so, this would also give staff then the opportunity to say, you're providing all these things, and so, it's within a certain percentage that we could go ahead and approve that without having to come back every time to council. And so, that's, that's the first part. The second part is, we have suggested that in Area 3B, which is the area where Benita Beach Road overlay intersects the downtown overlay, and we, in reviewing that, feel that those, the uses within that overlay need to be more in line with the uses of the downtown versus in line with the uses with Benita Beach Road corridor, because we're trying to attract people into the downtown. And to that end, we have taken and looked at the uses that were in 6A and 6B, and taken those and gone through those, and come up with a list of suitable uses. I want to provide a caveat there, that we will probably be back to add some uses that the manager has contacted Bob Gibbs, who did the study for downtown, and asked what uses he thinks would be appropriate there, and we're on the same page, but there may be some, we may be back to ask for some additional uses to be added there that would be very appropriate to entice people to go downtown. And so, those are the two major changes. We can go through the ordinance line by line, if you want, or we can take questions.
All right, let's, let's just do, is there any particular questions? And before we get started in that, I just want to make one, one comment there, is that I, I'm, I'm all for us developing kind of a shopping list of what we would like to see there, but there, and, and it's important that we find out that there's something that's economically that works, something that works for the area, and having Gibbs to do that, that's a great idea. But I also think it's important that we, we incentivize that. I mean, it's, it's one thing to, to keep this target moving all the time where nobody knows what they can build on their property, if there are some things that we want to do there. I think we can work out some really great incentives to where you incentivize that happening, and, and because what we want is somebody who's going to be successful. I mean, what we don't want is somebody to cause a use to happen there that, that can't function, and you end up with something that's going in and out of business all the time. Whatever goes there, successful. I think that ought to be the priority, successful, and that people will come to. So, anyway, we'll go to, Mike, Mike, do you have anything for this, or?
Yeah, well, on page two, where it's added that the city manager designee may review variances administratively within all redevelopment subareas, which may include but are not limited to, I was just wondering if we could reword that to get rid of the, but not limited to, because when you say that, it's pretty much saying, it's this stuff, but really anything else you want to do, too.
Yes, I would make the change at the beginning on subsection A, and also on number two, and just including height setbacks, building siding, landscaping, and regulations specified in Table 4872A.
Good. Ask him.
And then, you know, with the allowed uses, obviously, we would love to have ice cream production there, manufacturing, and tasting.
Actually.
Got to have the tasting to go with it.
We, we allow specialty foods in almost every sub-district.
Well, and I think what Mike's getting at is, but what about the production of that, an ice cream factory?
And, and with, with getting hit cold with it, but.
I got it.
I'll take the fun. I'll take the fun. I, I think there, there is room to look at that. I, you know, and you wouldn't want, and I know they're not proposing this, you wouldn't want a 40,000-square-foot production facility with a 500-square-foot showroom. On the other hand, we should look at, there is a tourism aspect to that. If you take a look at Krispy Kremes, how they manufacture donors there, you can watch them be made and go get a hot Krispy Kreme, I'm not.
You guys are killing me tonight.
Or like the microbrewery that is allowed in there.
Yeah, so I, I think that it's something we should sit down with them, and we should talk about, and, and see how it can be incorporated.
Well, I, and I like where Mike's going with this, because that's the kind of flexibility that, that you really need to have, that the community needs to have, is that when something comes along, yeah, it's technically their manufacturing, but holy moly, if they connect that with a tourism aspect and make something fun out of it, why not, right?
Yeah, and, and I don't know where he's looking at, because we haven't talked. I always talk with Mike Fegan, but I haven't talked with him.
But, but beyond that, just in this document, something needs to give us the ability to do that. That's all we're getting at.
By the time we get to second reading, we'll figure something out.
Good, good. Mike, what is your?
Well, and the last thing, kind of adding on to what the mayor was talking about, you know, we need something that's going to be viable there and stay there. We do have an interested party, and I just want to make sure we do not completely shut the door on that interested party.
Okay.
And as it is now, it kind of, it's leaning that way, or pretty much is that way.
Well, and I guess that so far is, how do we approach this? What you're doing is specifically trying to figure out what, and that's what, what's the name, Gibbs? But I, I think that we need to be guided by that. I think, you know, we can, we've all got an idea of what we'd like to see there, but I think we need to be guided by what, if Bob and some of the experts say, if, and I don't mind if Bob Gibbs or somebody like that says, yeah, that, that, that's a perfect gateway deal, good, why not? But if he comes back and we have evidence during this process that that's not a good use, or whatever, I think that we need to be guided one way or the other by that. And I don't mind, I'm, I'm with Mike, I said, I, I don't want to preclude that if it's something that's, that would be beneficial to it, but I, I think we need to see evidence to one way or the other.
Yeah, and I, I think in response to that, I have talked to Bob Gibbs about the case specific. He does not believe that's the appropriate location, but he did indicate in, in answer to the question, well, what should the city really expect to see in terms to it, located its gateway to its downtown? And his answer was, small hotel, office, good retail, sit-down restaurant, those kinds of things would be best in the gateway to the downtown. And he's already indicated that, and we've had discussions, and he's actually going to call me again tomorrow, the next day, to talk about some of these things more. So, and in terms of the whole mayor's idea about incentivizing, whatever council decides to do on that, we'll be certainly thinking about that, but the other issue is that perhaps we need to do more recruiting of the types of uses we would actually like to see downtown. Again, probably coming out of the Gibbs report, and let's go after some of the uses that really will be successful downtown and will fit.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Anything? All right, we'll go ahead and take public comment now, Jay, and see what comes up here. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this ordinance, please come forward.
Brett Forbes, two issues. One of them on what, I believe you were talking around a gateway and all that. If there's, for example, at that gateway, and you're trying to work around it, there's a gas station, or a billboard, you kind of have to understand, you're not going to get some of these choice or things you would want to go there. I don't know if I'm making sense or not. So, that, that's, I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, my name is, excuse me, Steve Hartzell. I'm here with Paviss Law Firm. Some of you may know my partner, Neil Montgomery, who has spoken to you before. I'm here on behalf of Brightwork Real Estate, and I'm relatively sure that we are talking about the, the gateway corner, the northeast corner of Benita Beach and Old 41. I want to address that particular location. It's a 2.4-acre piece of property. Our client, Wawa, does have a contract to purchase that property and is interested in putting a convenience food and beverage store there. They really do look forward to becoming a part of the Benita community. What's interesting, because I know that part of their request is related to allowing a convenience food and beverage, which is not presently listed as one of the permitted uses in that location. It's important to them that a convenience food and beverage with self-service gas pumps be allowed at that location. They are not primarily a gas station. The gentleman before me just spoke to that issue and alluded. The gentleman before me just spoke to that issue and alluded to some concerns about putting a gas station at that location. Traditionally, they started out in the northeast Pennsylvania as a dairy store. They added food services, and they are primarily, they think really of themselves more as a restaurant that has gas pumps. They are primarily a food and beverage location, and consequently, it's important to them to be allowed to do these convenience food and beverage at this particular location. The orientation here is primarily going to be on Benita Beach Road. It is not the Old 41 location. I think that with regard to the kinds of things that you're interested in, in terms of pedestrian access, high-quality landscaping, architectural features, they're a company that prides themselves on being a part of the community that they're in, and they certainly want to be a positive impact at this particular location. So, I'm sure that they are more than happy to work with you, more than happy frankly to submit themselves to your review with regard to architectural review, landscaping requirements, pedestrian access. But it's very important for them to frankly be able to know what they can do at this location. And right now, food and, convenience food and beverage with gas pumps are not permissible. We would urge you to add that, even frankly, limited to this particular location. It's a specific location that has great access there on Benita Beach, and so we would urge you to add that to the list of uses, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this ordinance, please come forward.
Hi, Ken.
Hey.
Well, I think I mentioned it at the earlier inception, but I just, we've been looking for, gosh, maybe a year or so, for a place to manufacture our ice cream. And I should probably start by saying thanks very much for participating in our creative flavor contest, because the Benita Beach pump came out great, by the way. We'd love to make that flavor within the city of Benita, but there's scant few places when we, where we can actually do that. So, I just thought I'd bring that to your attention, and maybe you guys could see it within your purview to grant the access of manufacturing ice cream in other areas. We could expand our search. Sure appreciate it.
Sounds great. Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward to this ordinance only. No? Okay.
Just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we were going to, we're going to keep it at the conceptual level and talk about that's one thing, and I think we need to do that, but if we're getting really down to specifics, then it's a different deal. You know, we've got, we have business owners almost directly across the street who we have practically hamstrung from making, using their property the way they wanted to do it, because we have so many, we have so much interest in a vision of creating an artistic, artist area and making it something that's really walkable. The, if it was a restaurant with pumps, that's one thing. If it's a restaurant, that's different. I think we really need to be careful about what we're putting at that corner, because that is the gateway to what we hope is a walkable, bikeable downtown. So, I didn't intend tonight to get into specifics of it. If we're there, we might as well get it out and talk about it, because it is going to be an issue.
Yep. Yep, Bill.
We could define where the location is more specifically, other than Benita Beach Road?
Northeast corner of Old 41 and Benita Beach Road.
There's a bank building. There's a bank building.
That's exactly it.
That's the location.
That's the location.
Okay.
Yeah, I think staff, I'll paraphrase for you, but you probably just need to get your input, and might as well just go ahead and punch the elephant in the room in the face. The staff's concerned with that, with being something that's a real high generator of traffic, is because of the location. And we, we've had these discussions about the same thing that makes it a great corner for something high-traffic makes it bad for the corner, because it adds to that traffic that's already there, especially for the access issues. It's not, not real, real deep. And I know that the, the, what they've, the potential applicant has shown has some access down towards, away from the intersection a little bit. There is some concern that, that how, even though they see themselves as a restaurant with gas pumps, it's, it still has the look of racetrack or Speedway or something like that. Not that I'm comparing the applicant with that. And as much as people love this particular purveyor of food for their subs and sandwiches and everything else, it's a pretty high-performance thing for that area right there. And I think that's, that's the reason we're probably here with this right now, is because we've been looking for something to be that gateway for a long time, and staff just wants to be careful. And I'm okay with just going through this process that we're going through without precluding much anything until we put the seal on it, as long as we get testimony, professional testimony about what's important to allow for that gateway and, and, and back it up, not just by saying so, by backing it up with example. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do know what you mean. And it's, you can say, well, it's, it's easy access, but frankly, that, that corner does not have easy access. You have one way in off, off the westbound, off of 41, then you have one way out northbound on Old 41. I, I don't, I don't see that as a, as, as fitting nicely with walkable, bikeable downtown. Now, we haven't discussed the issue specifically yet. We haven't gotten to that particular client that's asking those kinds of questions, but the fact is, we need to be cognizant of what we're trying to do broadly in that area. We're putting way too much money into it to have it not be exactly what we want it to be.
Yeah, and we for sure don't want to get in a situation, I'll mention the dreaded car wash fiasco that we went through. We don't want to be in a situation where we say, yeah, yeah, okay, we'll allow these things and they're special exception, and then we, we let them go fishing for six months, and then all of a sudden, a public outcry comes, we don't want you doing this or that, and we turn them down. That would be amazingly cruel to a really good company. So, I think that doing the right research, doing this process that Carl wants to go through, getting some professional testimony in this would be great, because I got a lot of opinions about this, but I'm a marine contractor and you're mayor. But, so I think we do need to know from experience, people who have experienced some of these downtown areas, what is the kiss of death for a downtown area to have for a gateway? What's going to suck the life out of that corner? What's going to add life to it? I mean, wouldn't you all agree?
No, and I would just add, I think there's been a lot of good points raised here, as long as we're talking about it from the 10,000-foot view, not ground level here. Let's keep having the discussion. Let's go forward, but I don't know, Wawa, maybe, maybe look at another location too, because we'd love to have you in town, but this one may not be the ideal location, or it may. Not trying to, but it's a, it's a wonderful company. I know the company from the northeast. I know they're very happy. Governor Scott came to the ribbon cuttings in Fort Myers. It's a solid, solid company. That would be great for this town. However, let's keep our minds open as to what we're trying to do there and possibly think about maybe another location somewhere in town.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
And I, I just, at a very high level also, you know, staff has, has expressed serious concerns to the developer as well as to Wawa about this particular site. However, just as Councilmember Simmons indicated, we've also told them this is not a Wawa issue, okay? It's the use itself, and we have offered to try to find them a more appropriate location in the city, because we want them here, but we do have serious reservations at this point in time, and, and we're willing to help them find another location, but we will follow the path as directed by, by council here at this point.
And I think that the real, real good news here, I think, ironically, is they want really bad to be here, and they love that corner. I think that that's great. I think that's great news. So, and, but I just think it's up to us to be fair to everybody concerned, so. You, you ready to move on with this? And, and like I said, I have faith that council throughout this process here that we'll, we'll drill down and do the right thing here for the community. Okay? Anybody like to send us to a second reading?
Let's do.
Motion, motion is second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkirk?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, what do you got for us next?
Next is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4 zoning, amending 4-1315 related to the affordable housing bonus density provisions in this zoning chapter, requiring green construction for residential units eligible for affordable housing benefits, other minor changes, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion code and effective date. This is a first reading and public comment. The ordinance will be scheduled for October 21st, 2015, at 9:00 AM in these chambers for the second public hearing. The local planning agency reviewed the ordinance on October 1st, and they did make a few changes. On page one, they changed families to household, and they made a correction to scrivener's errors. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient.
Okay. And what, what was the driver behind, behind examining this?
The green.
The document. Hello?
I'm back. For the record, Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan. The driver for reevaluating this is our Florida Green Building Coalition Green Standard Designation application that we are currently pursuing. The more things that we examine in terms of green buildings citywide can get us points towards that designation. So, one of the credits that we are pursuing here is to mandate the affordable housing green bonus density component. So, the only item that we are looking at opening up here is that if any applicants come in and seek out the affordable density bonus, that those specific units above the standard density that they would be allotted per their future land use would be mandated green. Only the extra units.
Cool. Very good. Well done. Any other questions? Jennifer, thank you. Well, well done.
Just real quickly.
She's very competent.
She is very competent, and, and I appreciate the fact that we've talked with Habitat, because I've also spoken directly with them, pardon me, and they're really following the policy anyway, so it's not like an additional cost to them, and that's important.
Cool. Good deal. Any other questions? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
This time, we'll go ahead and take public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak this time, please come forward to this particular item.
Brett Forbes, just wanted to throw a idea out. Right now, the first hundred, up to 100 homes can be built standard construction. As far as we know, the only homes that are underway in here right now on the affordable would be the Habitat homes. And per Councilman McIntosh, they're already complying with green. So, if you would really want to, it's not going to affect your points that you're after, why don't you say, if you build the first 100 green, in the next, you can build 50 more. If you only build 50 out of the first 100 green, you get to build 25 more. And that would really be encouraging them to, you know, to get to that 150, you got to build them all green. Just an idea, but it's not going to affect your points, which is what you're really after here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. I'm seeing none. We'll close public comment. Council, what's your pleasure?
Please approve.
Motion to send a second reading?
Yep.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkirk?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay. Next up?
And I'll take this one. This one's a first reading and public hearing of the following ordinance, an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 6, signs amending Section 6-112 to amend the regulations regarding permanent on-site signs for schools, churches, daycare centers, parks, recreational facilities, libraries, and other, other similar uses, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date. The local planning agency did review this ordinance, October 1st. They did find it consistent with the comp plan with some alterations. I have reviewed the affidavit, affidavit of publication and found it legally sufficient. I know we have staff, Mike Fegan, here from Community Development to explain a little more. I'll add one thing up front. Audrey Van, city attorney here to my left, did send a memo, and she copied you all on it. It raised some concern as to this ordinance, however, it's mostly been, those concerns have mostly been alleviated by some of the additional requirements of 400-foot frontage and that the property be on a collector road. But I'll, I'll let Mike Fegan take it from here.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Fegan, Community Development. I know that signs is a favorite topic of everybody in this room.
Yay!
So, unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm going to try and keep this short and sweet for you. A little bit of history about this. As you all know, we, we passed a full-scale sign code change back in January. This was one of the sections that was not touched at that time. And as you know, we are consistently going through reviewing the ordinance for nuances and things like that, and this was an area that, as the planner on call, for those of you that don't know, I'm the planner on call. What that means is I am essentially the first contact person with community development on the zoning side for a lot of these inquiries, whether it's signage, opening a business, development regulations. Usually, I get first crack at it. I have received more than one inquiry about signage with this particular issue, so I don't want you to think that this is coming from some type of isolated incident. I, I do log these requests.
More than one, you mean two?
Several.
Sorry.
Several. More now that this has been sort of added to the agenda. In, in general, this was something that we were looking at in terms of compatibility and proportionality. To give you, we'll use the church use as an example. There are churches that are on Benita Beach Road, which is a commercial corridor, and in the sign code, the Benita Beach Road corridor standards allow for signage of seven, eight feet. I can't remember off the top of my head. In general, though, because the church use, they would now be more restricted to only six feet, under the way the current code reads, even though they're within a commercial corridor along Benita Beach Road. And so this was designed to sort of add a compatibility portion to the code beyond just that of the use per se. One built-in protection that we wanted to add was not making it a full-scale change in the sense of replacing what's existing, but to add on to what's existing, provide you meet criteria X, Y, and Z. And so one of the criteria would be the amount of road frontage that you have. The, the original number that was discussed was 330. This was done based on a number that was found in the Transportation Section of the Comprehensive Plan about the separation of driveways and commercial corridors. 400 was the new number that was discussed with staff and the city attorneys, and we do feel comfortable supporting that number. If you have at least 400 feet of frontage on, on, on your property, you now become eligible for a different sign standard, which does allow an increase in height instead of six feet up to eight feet, and increase in width up to 12 feet for a total sign area of 96 square feet. One thing that's important to note is that is not 96 square feet of uninterrupted sign advertising area. You are only allowed a maximum of 75% sign copy area. The other 25% is completely devoted to architectural features. I just want to make that clear, because we did want to try and avoid it looking like a billboard, so to speak. So, there is that architectural standard that was built into it. The other criteria is that because many of these uses are found in residential areas, and we want to be sensitive to that, we wanted to change the lighting standard. These signs, at least under the draft that we are going to be proposing, it's not written on the green sheet version, but it is in part of the discussion that happened with LPA as well, external illumination as opposed to internal illumination. If you're going to qualify for this, the sign cannot be internally lit. So, similar to the Old 41 standards where we have signing, gooseneck lighting coming down, some type of external lighting source, we would go ahead and apply the same standard for these uses due to the sensitivity of surrounding residential areas. The, the third thing that we would go ahead and establish is that we do allow for a, a additional increase of sorts to that, even though we're saying 96 square feet, there is a caveat of an additional 10%, solely architectural, though. So, we're not talking about an increase of sign copy advertising area. Most of it would be the, the architectural standards. That's really it in a nutshell.
Okay. Council, questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Just real quick, Mike, thank you.
You're welcome.
You said there've been several requests. Specifically, what brought the request forward? I, I don't, I don't understand what they're really trying to do here.
There, there was a, there have been several issues with this regarding churches wanting to utilize sign standards for their property, coming in to redo the sign, whatnot, and the, the initial reaction, in fact, it actually slipped out from myself as one of the planners, was that, yes, you can do, you can do eight feet. Didn't even, you, you can do eight feet. Going back and reviewing the code, that was not the case in terms of the way it was written in that, and I, I can absolutely admit that that was a complete error, but it did sort in that. And I can absolutely admit that that was a complete error, but it did sort of raise a question as to where that came from, the gut reaction of doing that. And again, I was thinking Benita Beach Road corridor-type standards. There are churches there. I know the standards of BBR in terms of height. For whatever reason, in the current version of the code, not the proposed, churches, schools, daycares were treated differently. And so, the goal then became, well, again, you know, always wanting to keep the code up to date, look for any nuances, as big or as small as they may be, to go ahead and establish some type of baseline compatibility throughout the city. So, that's primarily where it came from. Once that started happening, and I don't know if it was by accident or not, I received two other inquiries from two other churches wanting to discuss additional sign requirements, and told them that something was in the works, that we were looking to discuss, bring it further to council, and here we are.
May I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, well, I'll get back to the original question. Is it that they need more space for letting people communicating? Is that what that?
That is part of it. And there are instances where these properties contain more than one use. For an example, there's a church property off of Vanderbilt that, in addition to being a church, it also houses a school. The sign standard still only allows for one sign to promote both businesses. So, in that sense, you're allowing additional square footage to provide advertising for both businesses that are on the same property.
Is that a one-time-off happening? I mean, do you have more than one client or more than one request with dual purposes on the property?
That's an example. I believe there are two other churches that have a similar setup. The other request that I did get was from a property that was just a church, right now, though.
Yeah. And I guess the big difference I see in what we're talking about, the signage, and I don't have a particular problem with this. It's eight by 12, 96 square feet.
Yes.
Twelve-by-eight sign, which is pretty good size.
It is.
But most of the properties we're talking about are destination properties. There are people who know what's there and are going there because they have a purpose for going there, as opposed to a retail business where people may stop because they see something on the sign that says something they want to see. So, I guess I'm questioning why we're making that kind of a change so dramatically. And I think you've answered my question, but thank you.
Any other questions? Mike?
I'm not sure. Why are schools, churches, daycare centers, parks, recreational facilities, and libraries treated separately from anything else, as it is? I mean, if they're on Benita Beach Road, why wouldn't it be exactly the same rule as a business next door?
If I may, from a legal standpoint, well, I'm going to answer the zoning standpoint first, which is most of those uses, we also allow inside our residential neighborhoods. So, the other signs, and if, I don't know if you saw the memo, but in the memo explained, there's a difference between commercial corridors, like Old 41 or Benita Beach Road, and residential areas. And churches tend to be, which is great, they tend to be everywhere, which, you know, people want, we want that as a community. But then, if you put a sign and you try to create a baseline where you have the same size signet everywhere, you're going to have larger signs in areas that would be residential. Now, to help correct the situation, we discussed this, especially with that case that came forward, the Reed v. Gilbert, we discussed it at the local planning agency. And the local planning agency said, well, and it was Bob Thinnis, who in his prior life was a planner, and said, hey, don't forget that residential areas, you have slower traffic, so you don't need as big a sign. If you remember, that was one of the things that Bob mentioned, because theoretically, you drive slower in residential neighborhoods, or you should be driving slower in residential neighborhoods. It comes down to, and this is the legal concern, and it's very rare where staff and legal have two different viewpoints. The concern is this will allow additional signs. Now, to reduce that, we increased the square footage, and we also required that had to be on a collector road. Through playing around and talking with Jay, as far as how big 330 square feet, 330 linear feet, that's roughly two and a half acres. So, that takes out quite a bit of residential property. Understand that my concern isn't the churches, the institutions, but remember, we cannot have content regulations. And this new case that came out kind of changed how I looked at time, place, manner restrictions, as well as everybody else in the nation. Because of that, the concern is by opening this up, you're going to potentially have more signs. So, I think staff is on the right track by, you know, putting in the collector or above, so that you don't have it everywhere in the DRGR. Or, if you remember, many years ago, when Imperial Parkway, we tried to be very careful what we allowed as far as not to allow commercial, you know, do you want a lot of signs on that road? And that's a question, it's a policy question for you guys, but understand the mechanics of this. By allowing these signs, I can't necessarily prohibit an entity that's not a church institution from not taking advantage of it if it meets these requirements. And certainly, I cannot regulate, and nor can Mike, whatever content is in that sign.
Why isn't this, why isn't this being just handled by variance? I mean, if we're talking about something that happens every day, every day, every day, that's why you fit a regulation. And it seems like to me that if each case is different, and if you're in a residential neighborhood, it's one thing, and if you're 80 feet, and when you pull this rather arbitrary number of 400 feet out on being a collector road or above, and oh, by the way, that means nothing to anyone except for you guys, that or above, I start, people are going to start looking above the words there. You need to say, you need to be more, anyway, specifically address the capacity of the road would be good. But that's what I'm thinking. I mean, usually, when we do something that's kind of an exception, you treat it as an exception, and you make them go through a process. Why aren't we doing it that way? Let me get an answer first, or something to that effect, and then we'll go to you. Hi.
Hi. For the record, Jay Sweet again.
Yeah.
We did it for a couple of reasons. Number one, we wanted to make sure we had parity amongst all the churches. One of the things that staff is concerned with, and here's where we have differed with the city attorney a little bit, and one of the reasons we had originally recommended 330 feet, is because we did a survey, looked at all the churches that we could find, and almost all of them are lots at least 330. 330 is the requirement for driveway separations on minor, on major collectors and minor arterials. And so, they would have that kind of frontage. One of the things we, from our perspective, didn't want to get into is the Presbyterian church gets one-size sign, the Episcopal church gets another-size sign. And depending on frontage, that could happen. And so, we looked at it, said, let's create some parity here, so that whether a church is on Benita Beach Road, or it's on Vanderbilt, or it's on Terry, that they're treated the same. That's where staff was coming from originally. There's where we wrote the code, as we did in the beginning. The Reed, the Gilbert case came out, and Attorney Vance had some concerns, and I'm going to, she'll correct me if I'm wrong, but her concerns are, is that if somebody had a residential lot that was 330 feet and was on a collector road, that they came and asked for a sign. And under that case, and we'd have to give it to them, we don't control content, so they could say whatever they wanted to say on it. Staff is a little bit, we're not so concerned for a couple of reasons. One, they got to meet the architectural requirements, they got to meet the building code, they got to meet all this other stuff. If somebody wants to spend all their money that way, I guess they could do that. We didn't see that as a real problem. And when we looked at where that could happen, we found two properties west of 75 where that could possibly happen, if somebody was so inclined to do that. We didn't worry about being east of 75 because that's ag out there. There's a lot of five-and-ten-acre tracks. I don't know why anybody would put a sign on a five-and-ten-acre track where no one could see it. But in theory, under this case, that is a concern that she has had. She came up with, once we gave her the research, she felt that 400 feet would allow the churches to operate and provide a protection that she was concerned about. There's where it's come from. We could, if it was the pleasure of the council, say, what, churches that want more than X amount of square feet come in for a special exception under the sign code. I would not make it a variance, because variance implies a hardship. I don't know how you prove a hardship necessarily, but I think a special exception allows, would allow the council to, if that's the way they want to go, to let them have whatever they wanted, as long as it was in good taste, architecturally, location-wise, et cetera. We were trying to do it literally, you know, so that we were treating, make sure we treated every church equally, regardless of what the church was, so we couldn't be accused of favoring one or the other.
Big church, big sign, little church, little sign. Okay, go.
Well, I still don't understand why we're treating churches differently than anybody else. Why can't the sign go by the area that it's in?
You could, but that's not the way the code is written currently. And when we looked at that, and quite frankly, we looked at that and said, hey, we could just say, okay, if you're in the commercial, but then all of a sudden, St. Leo's wouldn't get the same-size sign as the Episcopal church over here. Why? Because that's not a collector road they're on. And would that be fair? Or that's not a commercial piece property. The other thing it becomes an issue, because if you do that way, you do it by zoning, most of the churches, even though they're on a commercial corridor, are still zoned ag. And no one's ever worried about that because they have their tax exemption anyway. So, then we'd have, we would need to rezone the properties in order to bring them into a commercial zoning, if you want to do it by zoning designation. It seemed, and maybe, you know, I'm always willing to admit that maybe there's a better way, but we were looking at a way that was most encompassing without with creating the fewest amount of issues. And we figured, you know what, most commercial businesses are allowed that monument sign that we've come up with. Why wouldn't a church be allowed to have that same type of monument sign that addresses architectural standards, that if they want the additional height, the width, it's additional architectural standards? And we felt that would be fitting. One of the things that we didn't do, they still have to step back further from the road than the commercials areas, because simply put, they are that more residential area. And so, there's where we came from.
But if I can continue. So, right now, if, say, on Benita Beach Road, we have an ordinance for the signs, say, a business is allowed, what, a 96-square-foot sign, monument sign? And if there was a church next door, currently, they have to have less because they're a church? And that's how, I'm just asking, that's how it is currently?
We, yeah, and I agree with where you're headed, and that's the reason we came up with it the way that we did.
But why wouldn't it just say, anything that's along Benita Beach Road, these are the sign rules? Because as it is now, if you're saying 400 linear feet frontage, what if one church has their parking lot on the side, and now they're 400-foot wide, church next door is only 200-foot wide, but they're 400-foot deep, and the parking lot's behind, they can't have the same-size sign?
I don't disagree. The question is, you know, this was the approach that we took. If we want to go back and take a different approach, we could do that. But the approach we took was to give the parity to all of the...
Is it possible just to have, you know, whatever the sign ordinance for that area is just pertains to everybody?
I think, that's exactly what it should be, but understand that by doing this, you're now putting, expanding into areas that previously did not, that were not commercial areas, that were not industrial corridors. You're now expanding and adding additional signage. I have no problem, as long as you understand what you're doing.
No, I think what he's saying is that if it's Benita Beach Road, and it's customarily a commercial corridor, then you get a commercial sign. If it's in a residential area, you get a residential.
Absolutely.
You get the 32-square-foot. That's what you're saying, right?
That would comply with Reed v. Gilbert, and that'd be a perfect form-based ordinance. The problem is, is that right now, we're trying to amend an ordinance that has some content language. So, we're trying to put a Band-Aid on something that we still need a bigger fix.
So, what I just said won't work?
No, I think, no, I'm agreeing with you.
Or how do we make it work, right?
Okay.
That's what I think the issue is. How do you make it work, exactly?
Oh, okay. Hey, well, maybe we can just kind of cut to the chase. You're on, you guys are on board with what we just, Mike, just kind of, can you kind of work towards that, maybe, and see if there's some way you can make that work? Because what Mike says is right. It makes more sense, and it's simpler if you just somehow attach it to the surrounding uses and the surrounding corridor uses there. If it's a commercial area, treat it like a commercial sign. If it's in a residential area, you get 32 square feet. Sorry. Even if you got a mega church.
And you can still apply for a variance.
Sure, or a special exception.
Or a special, sorry, special exception.
All right. What do you think?
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And rather than a special Band-Aid, let's address the issue, fix the issue, and move forward. Let's not do a stopgap. I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay.
Anyway, we probably, we probably aren't proposing any changes to this, but we would like you guys to work towards that. I think that that would be, what Mike's suggesting is a lot simpler, if that's possible.
If I could ask a question?
Sure.
For direction purposes. We have a lot of churches that are on a corridor that you wouldn't normally think of being commercial, but by their nature, it tends to be that way. And I'll give you the two corridors that I'm thinking of. We have the one church on Vanderbilt, which comes up from Collier, which is a heavily-traveled corridor, that has commercial just past the church along that corridor. And then, we have Terry Street. And what's unique about both those corridors, why they are technically residential, they're not residential where you have houses backing out onto the streets or anything. Everything's a subdivision that goes in off it, which is the nature of it being a major collector road. Or even Terry, it probably should be a minor arterial, but currently is labeled as a collector. So, when you look at those roadways, there is a distinguishing factor. And I think one of the concerns we had when we looked at this was that you have churches that are technically in residential, but, and I'll take Terry as a good example. You have BSU that's in a residential district out there with their plant. You have several nice developments that come off it, but then you have three or four churches altogether there. And really, it's residential, but it's almost more in a commercial nature. And one of the things we didn't want to do was punish them, and it's a higher-speed road and everything else. So, I want you to understand where staff was coming from. And then, do you want us to address that separately, or do you want us to address that as residential?
I have an opinion about that. I would consider Terry Street to be a residential street.
Okay.
And just for instance, Vanderbilt Beach is, there's, there are businesses on it.
Right.
Right? I mean, Terry, no businesses. I mean, except BSU, I mean, it's the utility itself. But that seems to be a rather plain distinction, I mean, for me, unless I'm missing something here, right? I mean...
Okay.
It definitely will affect a new-life church. I know that.
At least if we explore that.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I mean...
I think we got direction of where we need to go, and we'll work on that for a second reading.
Are we okay with that? I mean...
Can we do that?
Question, can we go ahead and move forward with this, and then continue to work on the other?
Well, that's what I mean.
Can we do that?
I don't know. I don't know if this is within the confines of the title block, if we can...
Yeah. And that's where I gave him. At this point, we're talking about just amending Section 6-112. We can do it, understand, and I'm going to, I don't want to disagree, I just played on Lee Spins, but I think Terry's an issue, but I don't see it just as Terry. I see there's a lot of other streets where you have potential. And the biggest is Imperial, where when we built it, we spent a lot of time...
I don't see any problem under the confines of your title block here. I mean, it's essentially still what we're doing.
We will, permanent onsite signs for schools, churches, yeah, we can, we can work on it. We'll try.
We're not trying to be difficult. We're just trying to make, we're actually trying to make it simpler. It doesn't feel like it, though, does it?
No, it doesn't.
But it will be. Right, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we have, let's see, do we have public comment on this yet?
No, no.
Hey, let's invite everybody to the party. Anyone wishing to speak for this ordinance, please come forward.
Peter O'Flynn, it's the retired lawyer in me. Can't help it, Ben. I think Audrey is, she's making a legal point, but she's probably making the most practical point here, which is, we're hearing a lot about churches, but what she's saying is the Supreme Court is saying, you can hear all you want about churches, but anybody who has a commercial business can move in, in that same place, and say, hey, I'm entitled to the same treatment. So, my bottom line is, I agree with your direction.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. If not, I don't blame you. It's not fun. Okay, Counsel, you want to send this packing to the second reading?
So, move.
You can call it that. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And staff, I know that's a little bit of convoluted, but you just got your work cut out for you. You guys jumped in. Have a good time. Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkirk?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's clear as mud. Have fun. What do you got now, Audrey?
Thank you now for hopefully stuff that's a little more simpler, some second readings. The first is an ordinance creating the city of Benita Springs Green Building Program, providing for intent, purpose... providing for intent, purpose, and definitions, designation of responsibility for administration implementation, program scope, covers, standards, incentives, certification, training, program review, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion and code, and effective date. This is a second reading. I do not have a copy of the affidavit of publication. We haven't received it yet. Okay, and, but let's go forward in the hope that we will receive it soon. At this time, if you wish to hear from Jennifer Hagan, she can explain the ordinance to you.
Hello. Jennifer, could you explain to us what we're doing?
I think we got it.
Hello, again for the record, Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan, Community Development. The ordinance that is in, is in front of you is to create a green building program citywide, requiring city buildings only to meet Silver Lettable Certification through the Florida Green Building Coalition for all future city-constructed buildings, and creating a voluntary program for citizens and commercial development if they want to pursue voluntarily green development standards.
Another excellent explanation. Any questions for Jennifer? Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I, I just had a question on the, you know, voluntary side of a private person was building a new commercial or, you know, changing existing. What if they wanted to go green, but really didn't care about having the green label, where they'd have to pay to get? Because it says the program participant shall satisfy all the requirements, including but not limited to any monetary or certification requirements associated with the, I mean, do they have to go for it? Like if...
No, no. If they want to participate in the program, they would need to pursue a third-party verifier that would say that yes, this home is a green building. If they just want to build green, there's no problem. I did that with my home, and I pursued no certification.
Okay, so like if they want to take advantage of the upcoming gray water, you know?
Sure.
They could do all that, but they don't have to go for the certification afterwards?
The only reason they would pursue this is if they're looking for any kind of permit rebate that the city's offering as an incentive, or the recognition on the webpage or to be a participant, or someone that would be considered for a green building program that we would award annually. So any of those incentives that they want to pursue, then they could be a participant in the program. If they want to go green, they can do it, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Thanks. And we'll take public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier. It says you're going to put a plaque on somebody's house if they go green. Who's going to maintain the plaque? And can the owner take the plaque off of his house when it gets rusty or whatever? Who's going to paint the sign? Is it a permanent thing? I, that's the question I have about, about the plaque.
Okay, any, any other comments, any other questions from the public? Anything? Nope? Uh, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
And just for the record, I'm guessing that once the plaque goes up there, owner can take it down, put it in the storage, put it on his mantle, do whatever he wants to with it, right? Okay? Or it'll just rot and fall off, because, no, it can't, it's green. All right, good. Okay, what else you got for us, Audrey?
I'll take this one. This one's a second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance and ordinance related to fire prevention and protection, prohibiting open burning, providing definitions, accepting certain reasonable and safe open burning activities, and providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, inclusion and code, scrivener's errors, and an effective date. Um, this is a prohibition of open burning, including burning of yard, commercial household waste, as well as some, as well as all recyclable materials. But there are several reasonable exceptions to that prohibition. And so it's not as onerous as it sounds, as a complete open burn.
Gotcha. Cigarette lighters, that kind of thing, okay, right?
Yeah, you can cook over an open fire.
Uh, counsel, you got any questions? Mike?
Um, yeah, just, it says prohibits disposal of yard waste. So, you know, if I was raking up all my leaves, I'm not allowed to burn the leaves anymore?
Yeah, generally, because that's something that the, through the inter-local agreement that we have with Lee County, you know, the, the waste service will, will pick up.
So you're trying to encourage recycling, is what you're trying to do?
What if it was a larger yard?
Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan. And the intent of this credit was to promote air quality. So if a service is provided to take away those, that yard refuse through the interlocal with Lee County Solid Waste Division, that the opportunity is there that, that the property owner does not necessarily need to burn. It is removed through solid waste.
So there's no permit that could be gotten? Because I know if you're doing land clearing, you can get a permit and burn.
Yes, and those are all still active.
Yeah, there's no intent to usurp the authority of the Florida Forest Service, which, under that, if you pulled one of those permits, of course, yes.
Okay, and what about, what about in the more, these larger lots, agricultural? If it's available, you've still got to avail yourself?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would probably be a Florida Forest Service-type burn as well.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Anything? Thank you very much. Well done again. Uh, let's go ahead and take public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, please come forward.
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier again. Nothing mentioned about burning the stuff on the beach, leaving all the charcoal and stuff on the nice white sand that we just pumped in. There's a lot of debris that people rake up and burn, and have bonfires on the beach. There's nothing in this ordinance that addresses that. Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer, towards Rick's question, isn't there, there's something in the ordinance on the beach about open fires on the beach? Recall that sounding not, not fun?
I'd have to direct a legal, I don't, we did not...
The beach, the beach isn't directly addressed in the ordinance, but...
There's a separate ordinance, I think, that prohibits open fires on the beach.
I think sea turtles, we may have some restrictions, but not generally...
Sea turtles are allowed to have open fires.
If I recall, we did, we did bring it...
John, come up here and tell me, get me out of this. Didn't we pass an ordinance to that effect?
We did not, no, it was brought to council, and they said no.
County handles that, and has a ban.
Time out, what?
The, the county does have a ban on open fires on the beach.
Okay, there is a ban on open fires on the beach. Thank you.
We have a ban on open fires within our parks, city parks, but the beach is Lee County.
Okay, thank you very much. Good, thank you very much. Uh, counsel, you got any more questions? No? Thank you, Jennifer. Any other member of the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, counsel, what do you want to do?
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
And unless Audrey stops me, we're going to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak on any city matter at this time, please come forward.
Rick Steinmeier, did I get an answer to that question?
Yeah, uh, we, we said it's a beach, and it's in Lee County, so you can't have an open fire.
That's not his question.
Beach is in Lee County?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That comes under the purview of the beach ordinance of Lee County.
Private property?
Yep, private property, you're not supposed to have open fire on the beach, right? Yeah.
I don't know if that ordinance...
There's nothing in there. I, I've lived on a beach for 40 years, there's nothing in there that controls that. It's private property.
Okay, well, let's do this. Could you look into that for me? Because I, I've read that, and it's, it's somewhere that, that you can't have an open fire on the beach.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Counsel didn't adopt it.
Yep.
I'll, I'll write something up.
No, 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 don't write anything. I just want to do a little research on that, because...
We discussed the issue about 10 years ago.
Okay.
Well, you understand, my concern is that, you know, you leave all the ashes and the burnt stuff.
I got you.
And smoke.
We'll look into it, Rick. I'll find out, I'm curious now. Hi!
Hey, welcome back. Hey, Kathy, congratulations.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. A few things I'd like to bring up, not in any particular order of importance. The first is congratulations, my congratulations, to Bruno Air Conditioning and the Durumo Restaurant. That's exactly what we need, is people like that here, providing jobs. And besides that, you know, they provide two things that we love, air conditioning and food, right? And also kudos to Petey Simmons. I didn't get a chance to say anything when he was here for standing up for the skate park, he and his friends. You know, the kids do need good, clean, fun places to go. And I realize it's deteriorating, and I hope there's some way it can be saved without costing a huge amount of money. And yes, yeah, we need things for older people and all, but let's not do it on the back of the kids. Okay? Now, guess what's coming up? Riverfest on the 24th. It starts off with the challenge. Kayak canoe, K-1 surf, stand-up paddleboard. And those proceeds benefit the Benita Springs Waterways Conservation Fund. Okay? The duck race will be at 4:00. That's once again sponsored by Fine Mark, nice, nice prizes. And any proceeds after the prizes are given away goes to the Wonder Gardens. We have some very, very nice autumn festivities from 3:00 to 7:00. Pumpkin patch, pony rides, hay rides, petting zoo, and more. And the event is free. There will be a beverage wagon there, and that will benefit the Rotary Club. And there will be the traditional fish fry, and that's from 5:00 to 8:00. And we have a selection of mullet or tilapia with, you know, coleslaw, baked beans, roll, tea. That's always fun. There will be live entertainment also. So come on out and do it. And now, Ryan Willoughby, President of the Imperial River Conservancy, gave me a letter. I will give the copy to Debbie when I finish reading it. He couldn't come tonight, he asked me to read this. And it says, "Esteemed council members, our group, the Imperial River Conservancy, has received multiple complaints concerning the condition of the Imperial River and Keel Canal. The complaints have been of overgrown exotic Brazilian pepper trees, dilapidated docks, partially submerged boat, and trees fallen over in the upper end of the Imperial River and in the Keel Canal. We would like to be proactive in resolving these issues, as well as working with the city on programs to assist in the continued maintenance of the river. As we all know, the Imperial River is considered an impaired waterway, and the current conditions do not help the situation. The Imperial River Conservancy is offering our help in any way we can to help resolve these issues. Please let us know what we can do," and it's signed, Ryan Willoughby. And my comments are, I think the scope of what might need to be done is beyond what we as volunteers can do, because our members, whether we have a regular cleanup, they go out and we go into the mangroves and try to get the garbage and trash there. And of course, I'm still collecting them on a filament. But we're talking about from Old 41 up to Matheson and on up, all the way up. It's, obviously, I haven't been there, I can't personally tell you, but we would appreciate it. And as he says, we stand ready to do whatever we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we are to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, I have another ordinance for you. And this is permission to advertise. Uh, this is to modify the language for the administrative setback variances and unconformities. We already have language in administrative setback variances and unconformities relating to eminent domain. Uh, this would modify the language to make it a non-ministerial, meaning it would have to be done. Uh, and that relates to the lot of record to allow that when we do an acquisition, we will provide the administrative variances necessary to keep the property owner whole without the property owner having to assert any additional request of us in order to do so. It's an economic development-friendly ordinance in order to provide that. Carl, do you want to talk about it?
So, just to kind of put it simple, when we take a piece of property, we're not inflicting the, affecting the side setbacks, buffers, that kind of thing like that. We're holding them harmless from it.
Correct.
In a nutshell?
Yes.
Okay?
And before it was saying, well, we will do, do the paperwork upon you doing an application.
We don't have to do that.
No longer are you having to turn in the application, we are going to automatically process that.
Ta-da, thank you. Good. Everybody, any questions for Carl?
I, I still want to hear about Carl's feelings.
Feelings? Share with us.
About this ordinance?
Audrey covered it fine, I don't need to say anything.
Oh, listen to that. Okay, anything else? No? Counsel, what would you like to do?
Moved to approve.
Uh, you'd like to send us to a first reading?
Second.
I got a motion in a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, what else you got for us?
Oh, I can answer your fire question if you want, real quick. And let me answer it real quick. Fires are prohibited on the beach during nest, sea turtle nesting season. Uh, that is generally, I believe, May or June till October. Which is kind of funny, because it's wet season, so you really wouldn't, and mosquito season, so you really wouldn't want to be out there with a fire, anyway. On private property, they, people on the beach who are owners of their property can have a fire in their yard, which at that point would be the dry sand area, not the state area, the dry sand, on their own property. And it would be, it'd have to follow this ordinance. It'd have to use clean fuel.
This ordinance would apply.
Yes, sir.
Got it, thank you. Uh, anything else for us?
No, I think that was enough.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I believe it was, too. City manager's report, Carl, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first off, item A is the monthly financial report we submitted to council. We stand ready for any questions you might have. Okay, moving on to B, also, recommendation to provide approval to the mayor to sign the WCIND funding letter. They are an organization that does a lot of work in our waterways. We also receive annual funding for them to support law enforcement on the water. Um, and we would recommend that the council, or that the mayor be given authority to sign this letter on behalf in their funding efforts from the feds. That's it.
Counsel?
Moved to approve.
Motion approves, and a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
What else you got, Carl?
So, can I get a copy of that, too, as well? Maybe we can send it.
The letter is in there.
Yes, we'll take care of that, sir. Thank you. Okay, that's all I have, sir.
Good, good. All right, uh, mayor and councilmember items. Uh, let's start with Steve. Steve, what do you got?
Sure, well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Several things. Today was Walk to School Day, and I participated with our firefighters and law enforcement officers, our school staff and school teachers. We had about 150 students and parents walk from the Flamingo Flea Market to Benita Springs Elementary School. So, the objective was to make sure that we emphasize safety for children walking to school, and establish a habit of walking as part of a healthy living contest. And which leads me to number two. That took me to being late to the Spotlight's new opening. I apologize, but I know that you understood it was a real reason. Congratulations to Spotlight Magazine for their new headquarters, beautiful, much, 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 well-deserved. They've done a great job of bringing this publication around over the last few years, and we certainly appreciate it as a community. Dictionary Day was last Thursday, where every third grader in Lee County received a dictionary from the Rotary Clubs of the District, and I was fortunate enough to deliver dictionaries and distribute dictionaries to Benita Springs Elementary School. It's a great time, for those of you who have a chance next year, I'd love to take you with me. Finally, no, today I met the 12 members of the newest Estero High School Leadership Academy. We'll be working with them for the next, rest of the academic year, introducing them to the infrastructure of cities and communities, helping them understand how leaders have been successful. There is an element or two that come through City Hall, and it's a great opportunity for those of you in council to see what your leaders are gonna be sitting like in 20 years sitting at the dais. And finally, since it's the first time I've seen her really in person since she's been back, congratulations, Kathy McGrath, the Benita Springs Citizen of the Year. Let's give her a hand. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Bill, Councilman Longheart, what do you got for us?
I attended the Spotlight Magazine, and Peter, who's in the audience, and his son is, they're doing a great job, and it's probably the most refreshing thing I've seen in all my years, in terms of bright color, everything. It's just, it's really great. Thank you. And I'm done, I have a date, so...
Oh, I'll get you out of here. Okay, Stephen, what you got?
Good.
You good? Mike, what you got?
Well, first, I would like to ask staff to kind of look at the zoning, to see if we can accommodate ice cream production, tasting, you know, especially along Old 41, that would be great to have, you know, something like, they could do a tour there. Also, I'd like to also congratulate the Spotlight on their new offices and their third production publication that they have going on now. They're doing a great job. And then also, just make sure everybody comes out for Riverfest, and it's gonna be difficult, you know, with the road construction, but please attend if you can, and also, don't forget about the businesses down there, you know? We are still all open with the road construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pete, what you got?
Right, I, last here, but certainly not least, or second to last, I guess I would say, but I certainly want to congratulate Kathy McGrath as well. Kathy, you do so much for this community, you just, you dig in deep, you don't, you know, you're just there, you know, and if there's ever anything needed, people know they can come to you. I mean, you go above and beyond, and God bless you, sweetheart, and congratulations, so, well, congratulations, you do an awful lot, and it's nice to be recognized, even though I know you don't do it for that reason at all. You do it. The Spotlight Magazine, great, great open house, great ribbon cutting. I was a little late myself, but they've done a wonderful, wonderful job, the O'Flynn family, and congratulations there. Congratulations on the kind word of my son, as you know, that actually wasn't his idea originally, but he has a friend, Jake Delaney, who's his very good friend, that does go to the sports club next door. When Jake caught wind of it at the sports club, brought my son into the fold, and they went at it, so thank you for the kind words. I'm pretty proud of him for doing that, all on his own, and while I'm bragging about my son, we'll wish him luck this weekend against Cape Coral, as they enter the game 6-0 on their football team for Pop Warner, so...
Okay, thank you very much. Couple of things here, it's gonna be a busy week or two coming up here.